Really impressed with everybody's message and their passion. It's so nice to hear all the candidates be able to like put sentences together and stuff. I won't even go into the one two years ago. Nah, we won't bring that up. So now we're talking about Mammell City Council Ward One, Position One. I think the incumbent is here. There he is, or I think he is. The most. Thanks for coming. Thank you, your service. It's as, what do we call the city council? A meat grinder.
Yes.
It's a meat grinder. It will grind you up sometimes. Cause I've watched the meetings. Anyway, it is, it's a lot of work. It's a lot of time. I think you do get paid, but I think it ends up you make like twenty seven cents an hour.
If you're meant to encourage.
By the time it's.
If you're meant to encourage, it's not working.
Yeah. I'm just, I'm just shooting you straight. Our first candidate is Barry Brown. He's a longtime resident of Mammell, happened to move here in ninety-four. Over the past thirty years, he's contributed to the community through various volunteer roles, including assistant scoutmaster, soccer coach, and treasurer for counting on each other. He has a degree in business administration with an emphasis in information technology and two decades of management experience at Fortune one hundred companies, Mr. Brown.
Good evening, everyone. My name's Barry Brown. I'd like to begin by expressing my severe, uh, sincere.
Hold the mic up. It's close a little bit. There you go.
I'm not used to.
That's all right. There you go. You're good.
But I'd like to give.
We'll bonus you ten seconds.
My sincere thanks for you for moderating tonight's floor. I'd also like to extend my gratitude to the Arkansas Newsroom, the Mammell Area Chamber of Commerce, and the Mammell Country Club for sponsoring and hosting this event. Um, a special thanks to Jeremy Peppas. Cause he's gonna keep the time on the candidates. And he's got the hardest job of his whole life.
This tablet doesn't have to work. I don't actually do any work.
Like I said, I'd also like to thank each and every one of you for coming out, cause it shows that the community involvement for being here shows how important it is for you to be involved in the community, uh, voting process. My wife Madonna and I have lived here over thirty years. Uh, in fact, this past May, we celebrated the anniversary of our first day forty years ago. Uh, we raised the son Jason uh, from a tiger cub that you can come here with scouting program all the way into the Delta, and we couldn't have picked a better place to do it. For most of my thirty years here, I've been an active volunteer in the community in various roles. As was mentioned before, I coached soccer for four years. Uh, ran the Mammell Marlins concession stand before the pool opened, if you were ever here that long ago. Plugged in, I think, in the corner of, of the old community center. Um, I've assisted hurricane victims out in nearby Little Rock, and have just been there when people needed help. Today I serve on the board for the local charity, uh, Counting on Each Other. Um, where we provide, our main thing we do is we provide dental and vision scholarships for Montney Mammell seniors. I'm running for Mammell City Council to be a strong voice for the residents of Ward One. Not one sided of the Boulevard or the other, but for all of Ward One. I'll work tirelessly to ensure that our community runs, remains safe. I'll advocate, advocate for thoughtful development and prioritize our, to shape our city's future responsibly. I will prioritize fiscal responsibility, ensuring that our city's spending remains balanced and transparent in every decision and contracts. As we know, previous issues. I want to be a council member who keeps you informed, listens to your concerns, and always works for your, your best interest in mind. Thank you again for your support and for your vote. Together we can make this vision a reality for Mammell. Thanks, Barry. Thank you.
Watch out for the cake. No trip hazards.
Nibley.
Nible.
Uh, our next candidate is Mike Chesane. He's a graduate of Central High School. What year are you?
Do I have to say?
Yes.
Seventy-three.
Seventy-three. Well, I graduated in seventy-two. You look much older than me.
What are we both?
You look a lot older than I do. Don't mess with a man with a mic. He's a University of Fayetteville grad. He's much more educated than I am, just listen. BS in chemical engineering, graduate school metallurgy. How do you say that?
Metallurgy.
Metallurgy. From Lehigh University. He was an engineer for Western Electric in Calantown, Pennsylvania. He's a consultant. He's insurance and investment licensed. He's been in financial compliance and management. He served seven years for the Country Club of Arkansas POA. He's been married for thirty-nine years to Amy. They have four kids and four grandkids. Mike Chesane.
Since you guys know a little bit about me, I want to take you on, on a journey of sorts. As I look around here, I think, what a beautiful way to run a government. You've got to be here tonight. You could be a thousand other places. When I went out and started into this, there were a lot of questions. I've given out over five hundred cards myself, got another seven hundred to do. I've got the, uh, blacktop and concrete thing going, and I've been through physical therapy already, cause one ankle's starting to fail. What year did I graduate? Thanks a lot. One thing I get asked a lot, the hard question is, as in, what's really the reason that I'm doing it? Why? As a good reporter will tell you, there's a who, what, when, where. The why is, I'm grateful. I'm grateful as a Christian for what God's done, what His Son's done. I'm grateful as a father, as a husband, for those thirty-nine years. And as the women in the room will know, that have been married a while, I'm probably about trained, maybe another ten or fifteen will do it. And I'm grateful, as a good pastor, you have to have the first letter of all things, faith, family, and fellowship. You might know it as community. But when you're in a neighborhood, you get to know your, your neighbors. I've gotten to know the other candidates. This is a beautiful way to run a government. And because of those things, I thought to myself, you know, gratitude, how do you demonstrate it? You can say it, but you gotta figure out how to show it, as any Christian would know, and that's how I'm showing it. I want to run for this office because I feel I can make a difference. I spent a lot of years in the south part of Arkansas, eight counties in the Delta working on a retirement plan for the area agency on aging. Got to meet a lot of people there. Some of the other candidates talk about the system. I don't know how much the council can do, but I know how much could be done and needs to be done. I've had long conversations with our mayor. He loves the city. He's very, very helpful in giving you the background that you need to have to know how this is gonna work. Since I've never run for office, the other candidates haven't either. But I do have some things, and I'll talk about it in my closing statement, that I've learned about contracts. The big, the big issues in the community that I've run into, the, the big ones taxes. Nobody likes them, but they know they're necessary if done correctly. Traffic is a big one. Housing is a big one. We can talk about what makes for a better community, how much development from the commercial side versus the residential side. And then just what is a community? How much is enough policing? How much is enough fire protection? Well, as much as you need when your house is on fire. So if those things represent my reasons for doing this and my desires to give back to the community, then I would be honored to have your vote for Ward One, Position One, City Council.
Thank you, Mike. Well, I was wondering, as I saw all the signs around the city, why is she named LJ? Then I found out her first name is La Jarlin. Now I know. But any good politician or any good marketer knows you gotta find a book. So LJ's a pretty good a book. She was born in Arkadelphia and has built a life centered around family, service, and leadership. She is a bachelor prepared registered nurse. Wow, I don't, I don't know if I want you to quit being a nurse. Us old folks really love nurses. She contributes, uh, now her time with her family business, Secure Financial Solutions alongside her husband Jamil. She's a mother of two sons. He's been married for nineteen years and has called Mammell home since two thousand and six. LJ.
Good evening. Good evening. Thank you. Hi, everyone. I am LJ Wesley, and I am very grateful for this opportunity. Yes, I've lived here since two thousand and six with my husband Jamil, and we've raised our two boys in this beautiful city. Running and walking the trails, cycling the trails, enjoying the park, the old park. Um, we've also participated in the, the, uh, community league teams from T-ball to baseball, basketball and soccer. Our boys have enjoyed it and the memories are endless. I believe our city strives to create memories and experiences alike for all residents and visitors. Just consider the brand new Lake Willistee Park equipment. How many memories, memories will that create for the little babies that are coming through? Cause I know my boys enjoying it as they, as they were rearing. The pickleball courts. Now that's for all ages, for whatever year you graduated in. And think about the incoming Club Manor corridor. We've got the opportunity to have fresh market out with the, um, new food truck park that's coming in. With the memories, Mammell has the great potential for a great future. As your neighbor, I want to represent you, family, community, public safety, sustainable economic growth, and the transparency and accountability of our city. These things are really important to me. I am a planner and an organizer. I have skills to offer our city as we strive to advance this community and create more lasting memories. I've had the opportunity to participate in several planning events, such as the planning of the four-day festival. Now that was a feat. It was a great weekend and something memorable that I will always cherish. The first tree lighting ceremony, I was able to help with that. That was a feat, but it was something that we worked together and neighbors came together to make contributions. I think it is important for individuals to work together in the community to make your community feel as community. My grandfather was a pastor. My father is a pastor. My uncle is a pastor. And yes, my husband is a pastor. I just couldn't get away from those pastors. As a mother, a nurse, a ministry leader, a community advocate, a volunteer, a business owner, and your neighbor, I want to partner with you as we continue to build on the foundation of our great city. My only agenda is to serve people and solve problems. Ward One, let's build memories together.
We're gonna do this so everybody doesn't have to jump up and down. I'm gonna hand you the mic, and we're gonna pass it down the line. Is that okay?
Sure.
While you don't get up and down. So the first question. Which one is it?
The first, the top one.
Oh, okay. The first question we're gonna ask all three of you, the same question. Unless you get boring. Which option they ask possible. What two issues do you think you could help make a difference in now? And in the future?
And how, yeah.
And how? How, what, what two issues do you want to focus on?
Are you saying needs of, of the community?
Yes. The two issues that, that you think are important that we need to focus on.
Well, I think, uh, probably issue one that I would think is the greatest issue on Mammell is, uh, our development. We built a road from Mammell out to the highway. And what we need to do is do our best to work, I believe, uh, the owner, current owner is Mr. Freeman. Um, and get at least two, I would really like to do all four quadrants of that intersection. There's great potential for economic development there, so that we can put in a gas, you know, gas stations, some, uh, more shopping, things like this. That'll tap not just Mammell residents and revenue, but people going up and down I-40, one of the busiest highways in the country. I think that it's a great opportunity. Um, like I said, we paid for the road to get out there. I think we should try to do our best to get the benefit for the city. That also would keep traffic for, of, of the economic expansion from going through downtown Mammell, which we want to keep the traffic lower.
Okay.
Okay, and then.
Second.
Second issue sort of ties in a little bit to this on the expansion. We're probably gonna need to, uh, put another fire station out toward that, that highway. Um, we, we paid for the, uh, road to get out there. I think we could work with the developers to possibly provide property where we can put it. Um, we're, we are barely at two in the ratings on the fire, in the, with the fire station, when I talked to Chief Bufer. And part of that might end up being response. If we have another station out to there, which is, which, which direction we are, um, developing and, you know, moving towards, cause we can't go over the river, um, I think that's the two biggest issues we need, really need to address.
All right, Mike.
Because of all the walking I've done, and Chief, former Chief Williams will talk, talk a little bit about this if you ask him. The, uh, the Neighborhood Watch concept, I think, has a lot of potential. Sam tried that and to get the people involved. But I ran into another idea the other day. A neighbor has some cul-de-sacs. What if there was a grant program to turn those into small gardens? I don't know how workable it is. I do know that in this room, we've, I've had some people tell me that there is some money out there. So if we could bring the community together on multiple points, maybe that would make this idea of the Neighborhood Watch take on more of a beneficial flavor and more of an engaged flavor of small gardens. I don't know how, and the council may think that's the stinkiest thing they've ever heard, but if I think that's gonna work, I'm gonna give it everything I've got. The second one is a program that was written and accepted by Mammell back in two thousand and thirteen called Mammell Forward. Crafton Toll Architectural Firm put this plan together, and it's, was startling to me that, and I have it at my desk, on the table over there, page fifty-nine. Residential development does not bring the revenue to the city that commercial development brings. And I'd like to, to dig deeper into that Mammell Forward program and just see some of the reasons why. The city's still referencing it, and it may be getting time for it to renew it, but that would be something I would like to dig deeper into, because it's a complex document, multi, I think over a hundred pages. But that has some potential to help direct the kind of development in a much smarter way potentially for this city.
Okay, thank you. LJ?
Um, I think that my opponents are, they're right on with the economic development. And I would look forward to partnering and communicating with our economic development directors and planning directors to make sure that whatever resources we're bringing into our community, um, it, it speaks to our community. And not just because it's happened and worked well in another area, but I want to make sure that it speaks to our community and that we don't swell, but we grow at a sustainable rate. And so I think that that is very important. And then also the communication. Um, I read across a couple of residents, they're concerned about the communication from the city to the residents. So I think that that's important, that we have clear, open communication with our residents.
All right. Let's open a can of worms, shall we?
Shall we?
And whoever wants to go first, we don't have to fight. Who wants to go? Would you support an AMP tax or an increase in our sales tax? And how do you feel about that?
I'm a resident here also, so any tax or fee increase would affect me as well. I'm very mindful of how I spend my own personal money, and I think it is important for the city to be fiscal responsible and making sure we know the why, the when, how long, um, and the, for what reason, having a clear vision of what we're spending those taxes on. So as far as being in support of it, I would want to make sure I have a clear understanding of, um, the AMP tax that is proposed. I understand that several neighboring cities, they have that, and we visit them and pay that as well. So I can understand the benefit of it, but I also understand the burden of it. And so I want to make sure that whatever decisions, including taxes and funds from our local residents, is spent wisely.
Good, Mike.
Well, if you want to open the can of worms, we'll just play with it. Well, what's the other part of your, your question? Would you support a tax? Well.
Oh, yeah.
What for?
Well, and I, would you support an advertising promotion tax or an increase in sales tax? Either one?
I, I love the idea that in chemistry, you have reagents that produce a product. The equation requires both ends of that to make any sense. Taxes are that way. Until you understand what the purpose is gonna be, and especially in the sense of designated for specific improvements and sunsetted, then I would not be in favor of that.
Well, for example, in North Little Rock, they passed, uh, in two thousand and six, they passed a sunset of sales tax to fund the Pat Hayes Senior Center and also Dicky Stevens Park. So for Mammell example, and let's really open a can of worms, if it was an indoor pool, that was a sunset tax, would you support that?
Absolutely. Paul Harvey said it this way. Let's hear the rest of the story. Now, the mayor will tell you, and I'm enough of a businessman to know, it's not the cost to build a thing that you have to be concerned about. It's the cost to build the thing and then maintain the thing. I don't know how long the slide, the, the pump was out for the slide. It wasn't the city's fault. They couldn't get another one. But that's the kind of stuff you're talking about. You have to know what the long-term cost, if the life of this project is thirty years, and I don't know what pool should be, then we need to know what the cost to maintain that pool for thirty years. Where's that coming from? The sunset clause gets awkward when it's meant to maintain something that outlasts the clause. Then who's left with holding that cost?
Are we back on the pool or?
No, side question. You can take it wherever you want to.
Like I said, having, having this, this tax that we're already paying, um, is there any way, I'm just wondering, is there any way that we can encourage our lack of having that tax to, to bring any other type of business into our, uh, community? To where, you know, especially if it's food, the hamburger tax kind of thing, are they talking about, would they be able to offer less cost for their product? Could that be an incentive to bring more business into Mammell? Now, your, uh, the other tax is on the large tax and possible sunset. Like I said, depending on what it is, you mentioned the pool. Uh, I don't know if it would be something else, but I've mentioned, um, the, one of the things we were talking about doing would be a, a new fire station. And, you know, I think we could do that and possibly have the tax and sunset. Also, I'd like to find out, I don't know those number, the numbers currently, but current bond issues and everything that are out, are there any of those getting ready to sunset that we could renew as opposed to adding an additional half set sales tax to the, to the, to the citizens? You know, it depends on what, like I said, what we're dealing in, what we're trying to use it for. I think that's a smart way to do it. You know, is there something sunsetting that we could use already in place? Put it before the voters, let them vote, and then let's go in that direction.
Um, I know that all three of you have been very active in burning shoe leather. Mike's already mentioned he's injured himself doing that.
That's right.
And, uh.
Took one for the team.
And I, and I know that, uh, in talking to LJ and I think Barry both, that you have done a lot of talking to constituents or potential constituents. What are you hearing? What are people telling you? And what's been your reaction to, to what you're hearing that people want and what they expect from you as a representative? Whoever wants it.
Well, no, it's the same. I went first, then we had, it goes to Mike.
Yeah.
Okay. I'm a fair and balanced guy.
Right. Oh, wow.
This is your show. Don't forget that. The, uh, the citizens I've talked to, and I've given out five hundred plus cards, eighty-five, ninety percent of them just love living here. I mean, it's, sometimes it's pulling teeth to find out what they don't like, but if you pull hard enough, you'll find out. Street maintenance is a concern. I said the pool, because I've had a lot of people tell me that the closest heated pool is in Little Rock. It's not like you can do that. Uh, the green space thing, may work, may not, but I love the idea. When I was with the POA on the board for seven years, it was just keep the grass mowed and pretty. But, you know, and you gotta go talk to, and these guys, lady, know that you have to do that. You have to go out and talk to people to find out. Eyeball to eyeball, that's the only way to do it. It's surprisingly refreshing to find out how many people love the city, love living in the city, love having a doctor, dentist, grocery store, dry cleaner. Now, the traffic, we can talk about that, but it's hard to really find people that, unless they're just grumpy. You know, you all know grumpy people. They're just grumpy all the time. But those are the things that I think can be fixed, improved, made better, but generally people are just, they're here because they want to be and they love it.
Okay, LJ?
I agree. Several of the residents that I've encountered during my candidacy, um, they've mentioned the traffic congestion during, um, during rush hours, and I do appreciate our mayor for doing a study, and it's actually going on now. And I have, um, if anybody's interested in the survey, um, he has sent out a survey that he's showing that he's concerned about our concerns. And so there's a survey for traffic congestion. Um, there's also the concern of speeding down Country Club Parkway. And I noticed that myself while I was walking down Country Club Parkway, and cars was zipping by me, so I just, you know, waved really good so they'd see me, um, also on, uh, by the crossing. So I think that there's some room for, um, the, the, um, planning committee as well as, you know, developing to make sure that we have safe walking paths for our residents. And then also, um, there's always the concern about restaurants. And so having the same restaurants, but neither of them. So I think we have some good restaurants and some good potential for some new restaurants. And so that's, that's, uh, an area for conversation. And so a lot of the residents, like Mr. Chesane says, they are happy to live here, and it's a safe community. And once you feel a part of community, it just makes it all better.
All right, Barry? Time question.
Well, like I said, we, we addressed a little of the traffic. We have a couple of other things. One of the things that was mentioned to me besides the restaurants, somebody wanted a great steakhouse. And I was like, okay, you know, I guess steakhouses have certain criteria for certain traffic flows, that they'll put something in. It's just like a Chick-fil-A, you have so many bodies available and going past. So getting something like that is some, something else to address. Um, one of weird things that I've talked to a constituent, a couple of constituents about was, they were talking about the lack of police presence on the Boulevard about people violating cell phone use. Seeing them waving, you know, they're, they're sitting there, and all of a sudden, the, the car goes across the lane. You know, and there's, there's nobody in front of them, anything else that they're trying to avoid, and it turns, and then they end up getting past these people, and they're on their cell phone. It is a law not, not to be talking on a phone. And what I've seen also to support that is you have a lot of the cell phone usage, and it's not, they're not even using the wireless, you know, hands-free device. They've got a phone up to their ear, you know? I just don't see where the, uh, the whole thing goes. Like I said, the traffic, uh, the, uh, survey that, uh, LJ just mentioned, I took mine yesterday, um, pointed out the, uh, intersection right there at Walmart in front of First Security. Leaving town, I timed it two, a couple of different times, and the incoming traffic in the morning, that, that incoming light released before the outgoing traffic went, and both turn lanes were empty. I would think, you're trying to get the timing fixed on these lights, where if it's leave, traffic's leaving in the morning, we need to prioritize the movement of that higher volume as opposed to the lower volume coming into town. I think that a lot of our problems could be solved in, uh, getting the timing on that thing.
Or some of that's our dog issues too.
Excuse me?
Some of it's our.
Yeah, but there's, there's gotta be a solution.
Right.
So.
Squeaky wheel gets the greens.
Yeah, let's leave it there.
Okay, so now let's talk about which the weirdest person you talked to.
No.
I have a question.
It was this guy who graduated in pure year.
Yeah, really. What about golf carts on the streets?
There you go.
Oh, I know. I almost killed a couple of pills.
Well, you should be more careful driving.
You've got two minutes closed. You're at my door. When are you gonna tell me and how are you gonna get my vote?
I'm honored to have been endorsed by the Mammell FOP. I'm honored to have been endorsed by the Maumell FOP. This shows that they believe in what I have to presenting and that I'm standing on. I love Maumell. And while participating in a Maumell Leadership Initiative, I've been asked to create my own personal statement. My personal statement is joyfully sharing love and committed to care. I hope I shared with you my love, passion, and optimism for Maumell. Being surrounded by pastors my entire life, I understand the value of being assertive and supporting my community. From the residents I've encountered, yes, there are various concerns, but they all love living here. And I hear you, Maumell. I am a listening leader. I am creative and have solid planning and organizational skills. I hope to do my part for you on the City Council and represent you as my neighbor. Ward One, I'm putting in the work, and I'm committed to continue. I've enjoyed meeting you. Let's build memories together. I'm LJ Wesley, and I'm asking for your vote.
Whoever. Whoever is the most passionate.
Well, then, Mike might as well just stay there and don't have to worry.
Two minutes.
Okay, we'll try to do it as much sooner than that. Once again, I'm Barry Brown, and I'm running for City Council to represent Ward One. I'm a thirty-year resident that's been deeply involved with the community in all kinds of aspects. I don't know if any of the other two have even been here twenty years, maybe twenty-two for mine. So I've put in a lot of additional work in Maumell. I've, you know, been in the community, I've represented residents from seven to seventy-plus. Advocating for key items in the community, which people that haven't been here as long have always seen. Like when we were trying to get the Yes, Yes, Yes program, which was for the Jesio Community Center and also issues for the Quack Center and the baseball fields. I believe in safety first, thoughtful development, and fiscal responsibility. I'm committed to keeping our neighborhood secure, ensuring responsible growth, and maintaining transparency in how our city votes. Once again, I'm Barry Brown, and I'm asking for your vote because I think I can do a great job for the whole Ward One community. Thank you.
When you heard me earlier, you talked about taxes, traffic, housing, and development in this community. The budget for 2024, I believe, is about twenty-five mil. The budget has to balance, as I understand the way the city works. So responsible taxation, doesn't scare me as long as we know what we're paying for and we track it like a hawk. When it comes to traffic, there was a adaptive traffic program that was first brought to the City Council in 2015. I think they put it out for bid in 2019. I'd like to dig in deeper into that adaptive traffic program that was on Maumell Boulevard to see if that couldn't, using the proper software and the technology today, make that flow a lot more, they call it laminar in the chemical world, smoother, smooth out the flow like Barry was talking about. When it comes to housing, I can show you in that Forward Maumell program that residential is not evil, but it doesn't generate the revenue, the commercial does. What can we do to bring more commercial businesses? Maybe a steakhouse is the one, but other larger, higher wage, and the city's struggling with finding enough people. I think the public works is down nineteen maybe, they have a staffing budget for fifty-five, they might have thirty-six workers. Are there ways we can work to bring those people in? And ultimately, about the community, all of us want to do what's best for Maumell. All of us would do a good job. I've been here twenty-two years, have served on a POA. If there's anything lower on the food chain than the council position, it was being on the board of a POA for seven years. And all of the stuff about cats in the trees and all of that, I've heard it. So I would be honored to have your vote based on that and that alone. Thank you.
Well, I first wanna talk about the quality of our candidates, just a second. I think, what is this, our third or fourth at the time? These are the best candidates I've ever seen. Before I turn it over to Kelly for a good night kiss from her, I wanna tell you, if you ain't a member of the chamber, she gonna come get you. Because she is, she is banging the drum for Maumell, doing an excellent job, and has brought an air of positivity to the city that we hadn't had in a while. So I wanna thank you for doing that.
The only reason I know to do that is because Maumell is so great. They've been so easy to work with, and so it's been a pleasure to be here. Okay, just wanna thank everybody for coming tonight. Thank you especially to our candidates, all of our candidates that we still have in here. I know it's kind of a firing squad setup. And I appreciate you, and I appreciate you coming in to answer those questions for us. Also, I wanna thank my, like I said, my criminals and crime, your partner, crime here, for helping me plan this. You heard it, talk to me, crime.
This is being recorded.
Don't even make me back. Thank y'all all for coming out tonight. I really appreciate you. I think it's very important for a community to have well-informed people to make a strong community. So I appreciate you taking the time to do this. I know, I was gonna remind you, if you didn't see it on your way in, on the way out, please notice the large flyer for the Maumell Food Truck Festival. November 2nd, the City of Maumell and the Chamber of Commerce will be hosting a Maumell food truck. And it looks like it's gonna be really big. We've got over forty food trucks, we've got over forty vendors.
Good opportunity for Kansas City.
We've got a dog show, we've got a hot dog eating contest, we've got a pot baking contest. So don't miss out on the action. Follow the Maumell Chamber of Commerce or the City of Maumell, so you can see all those different applications coming out if you wanna enter into those contests. I think y'all'd be great for that, you could do the hot dog eating contest. Batter on the raps, batter on the raps.
What's she saying? I know, I know what she's saying, I'm okay.
It's only five minutes, you gotta.
Are there gonna be politicians allowed at that event?
Yeah, absolutely. So if you wanna boo, if you wanna boo, please let me know because we have over eight thousand people interested in coming out. So I think it's gonna be a big crowd. If you want to sign up for it, let me know. I still got a few available. And so anyway, thank y'all again for coming out tonight. And don't forget to go to the Pulp on November 5th and vote in favor of this.